Today is May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, seven oh three P M. The City Commission meeting on Lake Island, Florida. Evidence three very large. It's got a mic out of this. No. Anyway. Mr. President, our zone one?
Right.
Zone two, here. Zone three, yes. Zone four.
Yeah.
And City Administrator, City three, and Mayor are also presidents. I would like to introduce Vince Cooper, who graciously agreed to come this evening in spite of his birthday. So everybody say happy birthday Vince.
Happy birthday Vince!
Listen, I don't want to tell him if you, if I talk about this, it'll probably sound like a lot for him. So it's a the other. Let's go ahead. Father, I just want to thank you so much for the city of Lake Island. I know you've been here sixteen years, Lord. I just thank you for all that's happened in this place. And yeah, I know there's a few people that have complained about this without an overt majority. It's a wonderful place to live. And I thank you for that. I bless all the commission, the mayor, the city administrator, the attorney, all the people that put their hands to work to make the city of Lake Island, especially our police and our crime department, people that surround us and make it the same place to live. So we thank you for that. Just ask you for wisdom tonight for the commission as they go through this agenda. Ask you for the big justice here, that people be equally willing to go ahead and come to a solution. We thank you for that in Jesus' name. And then I'll take the flags behind us. I proudly salute this to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unjungled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Normally, I would say you won't get a commission, not gonna get a grant. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Administrator. Don't eat too much cake. Give it all you want. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications due to attendance?
Yes.
Mr. Commissioner.
I'd like to add a little conversation about the emotions of the county. So do you want to add?
Because I don't need to do current.
No.
You want to add another new business?
Sure.
Okay, so item eight. Eight. What was the?
Number two, management.
Was the request to all the pros and cons taken on for tonight? Okay. Yes, that was item eight D. Item eight D will be moved to the level by mutual consent. Okay. Any other additions?
Yeah, just one, but I don't know if we can wait until you get there. It's a qualified judicial right now, and I would pull it to discuss and maybe add a little presentation from Ms. Campbell.
Which I?
That is nice.
D.
That's right.
Okay. So just for, I said you wanted to hold that and handle it separately, is that what?
Yes.
Okay. Any other additions or deletions? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Those changes are made. We move on to group of minutes. Everybody have any additions or deletions or questions about that? Very done. Yes, both sets. Unless there's questions, I think we address. Well, I just want to make sure that it's in the minutes for April thirteenth and April twenty-sixth. Are you making a motion to approve those? Sure. I have a motion to wish your accord to approve both sets of minutes as presented. Second from Commissioner Bassett, in the appropriate session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries on. Thank you. And since agenda, it's up to both days, eight bills. Any discussion on the eight bills? Very done. Under that motion to accept, send agenda.
Motion to accept. Send agenda. Motion to accept. Send agenda.
Second. A motion from Commissioner Rupp, this is second from Commissioner Bassett, to accept this agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Since agenda is accepted, is there any old business, something on the agenda, but does anybody have any old business that want to carry on? Very done. One of the new business. And the first item is A, approval agreement with the gyms for management of a portion of the CAC building. Mr. Assistant Administrator.
I'm just mayor. As mayor, mayor of the commission. We have been meeting with the gyms about two months to create an entirely new agreement between the gyms organization and the city for management of a portion of the CAC building. We have heard from the gyms that they are satisfied with our agreement and from a staff perspective, we are satisfied with it. One thing I want to make sure that you note, that this particular agreement, the management agreement, we are within the gyms as a group, as a nonprofit group, to manage that building for us in order to keep it within the Echo brand, and thus leading us to necessity perhaps of paying back one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. So that's the purpose, is to provide a management organization for the CAC, to boost the activities within the building, that will be the necessity to improve to Echo, in fact, are doing, or should be doing, to keep the brand active. So this has been approved by both groups, so on a staff level here, so we recommend it.
Thank you. It's a great discussion from the commission, or actually a motion to approve. I have a motion you mentioned. Discussion. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. We have a motion approved for. Magnificent. We approve the trade remarks, yeah, for a very good amount of money. Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Ackery, second from Commissioner Bassett, to approve the management agreement with the gyms organization. Asked presented by staff. Discussion.
I have a question for staff in regards to pointing one on this agreement. And I notice it says the city reserves the right to install free facilities in our bay to lock all areas, and this is control as long as the atriums, area of the jumps control, access to the restrooms. And I just wanted to kind of go over that because I've been working with the museum. And maybe this is directly related to the museum, but I wanted to be sure that we are fulfilling our obligations to the Echo board in reference to not blocking that off of the judgment for me for that.
The city is the advocate for.
You're on.
Thank you. For this.
Thank you.
The advocate of Echo and the modification of the building between a management group and our own museum does not detract from that at all. And I should have said when I told you the gyms and the city were in agreement with this agreement, so was the museum. The people at the museum are aware of it, they understand it. It just says we reserve the right to block long for various days or times, but activities are going on in half the building.
Okay, so we're not blocking any of that that will come into play for that. That was my main concern, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
I am a little surprised by this new contract. It seems like last year, the contract was all about what can we do for the city, but now it looks like it's what can the city do for us? We now have two community groups sharing the space, but instead of sharing the expenses amongst themselves, they expect the city to foot the bill for pretty much everything. And apparently, the city is so desperate to avoid paying the Echo grant back, that they will agree to just booking it. With two groups using and renting the building now, the cost to the city will quickly add up. Also, rumor has it that some in the city are even considering hiring an events coordinator to help the group satisfy the grant requirement. I'm sure we will spend the amount owed to Echo in a short period, yet we will still give money to the county. Why not just pay off the grant, rent the building, and let everyone pay their bill away? If the building is rented for an event, the renter can be required to purchase insurance and pay for all their home supplies, i.e. paper products and stuff, which was in the contract for the city payment.
I would call that as a discussion about their joint agreement with the League of Better Living. And it's an agreement between the gym and the League of Better Living, and has no effect on this contract, the contract with the gym. The agreement is with the League of Better Living and the gym, with the city. So I don't see any problem, because many organizations do joint venture with agreements with each other, with one of them being the overall entity in charge of the union.
No, it's fine.
One of the things that you brought up kind of caught my interest, because I thought about it, I haven't really talked about it to any places. So I'm not sure where it goes, the rumor mill, it's things like that, but now we can talk about it. So you mentioned the possibility of hiring an events coordinator. That's always been something I thought the city would be well served by as a high-quality events coordinator. And have it be a staff position, and people who were previously on parks and rec and worked under that umbrella and do a lot more good, and the people that are interested in that really want to be involved in the city, and that would make it possible. So I think events coordinator who's last on parks and recs and recs would be a wonderful position to have. We haven't brought it up before, but as far as, we've had a big motion to hire a creative assistant. But future reference, I think that would be a wonderful thing to do.
It probably would, but we've got like other pressing matters right now. I mean, we need works coordinator, we need the city hall event, I mean, we not even have a meeting hall, nothing about city hall yet. So it's kind of like, can we get our board to straighten?
The one difference between the events coordinator and the director of public works and of the myriad of projects and decisions he's been managing was, is that a good events coordinator can more than pay the salary. Let me say this again, a good events coordinator can more than pay the salary.
I agree. I think it could be a topic for the future. I know that's not what you were proposing, but you brought it up, and I thought, the still ways we need to talk about it. The other thing you mentioned was paying off the grant, the Echo grant. And I have said many times probably, that I think that would be the best thing for the city to do. Get off the under that umbrella, all of the headaches that come with it.
That is my main.
Yeah, I sort of feel that's what we can land on this and talk about it. I agree that paying off that grant would free up the city's use of that building completely. We could use, we could make a store group, or we could make a thing like all, whatever we wanted to do. And we can, and we can still, we can still use this, we can consider the gyms without tying our hands to say exactly how they did that. I think it would be very nice to pay off that grant, and just that, one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars when that was built, that was awful money to do this now. And that Echo grant service, I mean, they made that building possible, and made it much nicer than it would have been otherwise. Most of that didn't happen because of the people of this town pulling their own selves together, and putting in their own sweat and materials. And so while the Echo grant helped make it nicer, it was most of it because of the citizens of the community. And I think to free that up, to be used by the citizens of the community without these restrictions would be of no harm.
In fact, your move back is looking correct. It's not in fact, the optics of it, I believe, would be worse. I don't know whether the memory of those people who are responsible for making that arrangement available to us in the future will be how they treat this. It is the only reason why we want to go through the hard work of continuing, continually to try to satisfy I believe, twenty years into thirty-year deal. It's forty. Maybe they have a different sentence to say, well. Any of that, any of that. To me, that's going to be the obvious, how could it backfire?
Yeah, we're eighteen years up to the forty-year commitments to that, and all they do now are twenty-year commitments. They don't do forty-year commitments anymore. But until the twentieth year comes, if we decide to change it, you have to have to pull them out. After that, it starts pro-rating for the next twelve years.
Has any of those councils out there asking if they would reduce it to twenty years, even though that's normal? And is it going to be something that we say?
I don't think so. We're, what we're trying to do is we're, we've got a good working relationship with the Echo staff right now. And they're helping us write these things and try to get it through. There's always, if the county council goes along with the recommendation from the Echo board, and they decide to be rather demanding the money back, that would be the opportunity to start negotiating. If we wanted to say, all right, you know, we're thirty, you know, if we were, got this grant now, you know, for the years included, you wouldn't have to put back before, but it's fair to negotiate. That, that's where I may have the opportunity to try to negotiate. Absolute worst-case scenario, in this whole thing, worst-case scenario, you have to pay back the grant. So I don't jump right to worst-case scenario. You know, say, you know, can we satisfy them, and can we use, you know, every year, we use it, really, I think it was two, what, two thousand and three? Two thousand and three, so every year, virtually years, every year from here on out, say, it's just fifteen thousand dollars. I think it's prorated evenly. It'd be less than like this, seventy-five hundred dollars, if they want to pay back, and then it's prorated. But I really think, based on the working relationship with staff, I think, I think we're gonna
You could change.
I think it's gonna continue, the relationship is gonna continue with Echo. Yes, it's restrictive, but it's also, you know, I'm not aware of something that would be we're here not just to Echo activities. We can do things that are non-Echo related, but they just want Echo there as well. So we can, we can still have activities that are unrelated, that are directly tied to Echo. And that's not going to trigger a default, as long as we also have other Echo activities. So, you know, I'm hopeful that we can satisfy staff, staff, that's satisfy the county council, and then we're able to work with the gyms and other organizations that are helping us, that we take off enough of those Echo things, that we can keep moving forward, and you don't have to borrow one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. There are other things you can do, we're talking about seven. But if it doesn't feel that way, the one fifty-six. Hey Matt, this is worst-case scenario.
Thank you. And I do agree that we want to be careful of jobs, because the Echo board is a valuable board in this, this little fire in this county. And, and we have committed a great deal from this, from this brand, as well as others. And so we don't want to step on its toes, or cross any lines that we don't have to. But when, and I did speak with Chief Chester, who was the original driving force for creating this, and he believes now that we should pay off and just be done with it, because it hasn't worked out. There's a lot of history there, and he wants you to look at all of that. But, but it doesn't step on many toes in the community, as well as other people in the community as well, who are very involved in that process. And I haven't heard anybody push back saying, how dare you, you think, I've heard anything like that. Most people have been supportive of the idea that they can pay it off. I do want to do it carefully, that's one reason I want to go ahead and talk about it sometime, I appreciate you bringing it up. And certainly, I think something the commission should consider at some point in time, will make a re-listen.
Back to the motion pending of the acceptance of the agreement with the gyms. Is there any further discussion on that? All the question, all in favor of entering in this agreement as it was presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Are you not hearing from the audience on that one?
I'm sorry.
Was it there?
Oh, you know what?
Before you vote?
I'm sorry, Mr. Bur, permission for? Mr. Bur, would you like to speak to us? You might swear, vote behind side of the racist.
Burden Burton, six ninety West Ohio. Can you hear me? Burden Burton, six?
He's done, recorded.
Burden Burton, six ninety West Ohio. I was around when this Echo came around. The idea of paying it off has been something that, when we first learned about it, I think it was over two hundred thousand dollars. So now it has, I guess, been prorated down to station.
No, that's the original amount, it hasn't prorated it yet.
Okay. The other thing, I guess, in the, keeping the Echo in place, there is the Boys and Girls Club, because we have eighty kids. I went to Boys and Girls to that, I've been asked to speak to that, about being able, being able to utilize that program on that building. Because for each body that's in there, it's a accountant's taking, it's an attendance, and we've got eighty kids that could affect positively the Echo in the same place. If you decide to, to pay it off, then the kids still would like to be able to utilize that facility. And it's a facility that was designed for the use of the city of Lake Island, and when they grew up and went away, we had to figure out another way to re-task it. Retask it, putting it in the library, putting it in the museum, and now the gym family has got it, it's, you know, I think it's a good deal. But we have the option to either make a decision to bring more kids into it, and there's kids outside, that could be inside, they could be utilizing. I do know that because of the fact that they did have a, a computer room in there, but the computer room now, in my understanding, is part of the museum. So again, we have, in our organization, we have people who would donate computers for kids. It's like every year, we have the Boys and Girls Club, of the year, and they all donated laptops. So we have a lot of organizations that would like to plug into the Boys and Girls Club, and give Boys culture to the gyms. So it's something to keep in mind, because we haven't really integrated them into what we do in the building, and that's probably, we're definitely grateful for that, but to be able to expand it to the gym, I think would also be an asset to the community as well as to the board.
Burden, are you asking us to not go with the contract with the gym, and do a contract with Boys and Girls?
I'm actually looking at both sides, I'm a politician. So the side of that, the side of the, if you decide to, to pay it off, it has its advantages. If you keep it, you don't want to spend the one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, you have a resource of these kids that can impact the numbers of people that go through it. When my wife had the, the mentorship program, every kid that went into the program, that went into that building, or whatever they used, those numbers were captured, and those numbers were then being able to process and then put before, for the board, I mean, for, for the Echo grant. So it's, you have a, it's an either-or kind of situation, whichever you do, there's a benefit from it. So I think we got more solutions than we have problems, so that's kind of where I'm at, is the way to continue.
We've been down in that gym for a while, and I really want to shift gears, I don't think that's fair to them. But if it doesn't work out, I need to look something different, I like what you're saying.
Thank you.
And as far as the Boys and Girls Club, using as long, utilizing as long side, the gym, that would be something I would have to just talk to gym directly about, and I would think that some agreement between the two organizations would be fantastic. But that's the gyms who currently manage that space, so you'd have to go through them rather than the commission.
And we would be willing to, to participate in, upkeep and maintenance of it, if the kids are using it, then we have a resource that we can fly into it, that allow us to be able to give back, and not just take away.
Appreciate that. Kelly Prescott.
Yes, Kelly Prescott, John Street.
Thank you, Kelly.
Forgot.
That's okay.
Kelly Prescott, John Street. Kelly Prescott, John Street. Right now, our city isn't in the best light as far as the Echo situation that we have with the cabinet. Pulled, pulled back the, sorry, pulled back the changes that we were asking for, and then canceled the walkthrough process. And we're not looking at it in a very high light. That being said, my personal belief is that we follow through with our Echo requirements, show that we can continue to, in good faith, hold up our responsibility, because as you might not want to entertain Echo in the future, we have a long line here in Lake Island, and there's many projects that can be benefited from the Echo program, and we believe for that to be a stain on our reputation. Also, that being said, the, right now, we have two groups that are volunteering, making this contract, but they're also volunteering their time and effort to bring in events and activities for the community. So we should allow them to do that before entertaining the idea of bringing in another staff member for event coordination. And I say that, and then I was an event coordinator, not staff, but I was a contractor, and it is a very tough job. Right now, we have many volunteers with this group that can show us, they haven't even had the opportunity to really get their hands into it, and show us what they can do. So I just, just want to sense, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. I agree, we want to maintain the relationship. We did have some damage over the last two years with the Echo board, and we've done our best a couple times. And we're trying to repair whatever, whatever damage might have been done during that process. We're trying to, trying to rebuild that. And I think we are doing a good job, the staff have been working well with the Echo staff. And much of that has been rebuilt, and we're continuing to try and do that. And certainly, the gyms are much more engaged in that process, and much more aware of it. There's been a lot of educational growth here within the, within the city staff, and also the gym organization, on how to really effectively manage and work with the Echo program. Anyway.
Next item of the business is, we did, we did vote, and then I realized we had a lot of time. The outcome of vote was four units and one day from Commissioner Bishop. Next item on the agenda is item eight D, outside gates. Mr. Assistant Administrator, would you like to introduce that?
Just to briefly introduce, Betty Doherty, who's our faithful visitor to love. Just to briefly introduce, uh, Betty Doherty, who's our faithful visitor to love.
Betty Doherty, one thirty-six, outside the gates, food pantry, eleven gates, and started off three families, now there are fifteen families. And the cost of food has gone up for several years, and we have made money from donations, from churches and the people. We need help.
How much is it for Betty?
Three thousand?
She said three thousand.
We face, it costs us sixteen hundred.
We have a bill? I'm sure we, we, we have eight thousand dollars in the budget. They might have a budget of eight thousand dollars for donations for causes such as this. I assume most of that goes, most of that interest to, to members of our community?
Yes.
Yeah. Make a motion to, uh, to make three thousand dollars in the budget. Just out of the, out of the budget. Have a motion from Commissioner Basso, second from Commissioner Bishop, to approve a three thousand dollar request from outside the gates, do an entry. Any discussion?
I just wanted to check with staff to see if this is, um, if this is in way of entering something that historically already, you know, if we pull the three thousand, if we just provide that, we're, we have promised to historically promised to other groups more than this amount.
We have, we have ten of the eight free time vendors inserted one number in the budget, and it's on a first-time, first-serve basis. But I will tell you, some of you who have been here a few years know, as soon as this hits the newspapers or Facebook, you will have a whole bunch of people saying, "Whoop, whoop." So you can check out, utilize it, but, um, if you remain at your current, but yes, it is available. It's first-time, first-serve. These are the nicest people, first day, first day on the avenue, but you'll have...
Thank you.
And for the discussion with the commission, Ms. Prescott.
Hi.
Is that on?
Yeah, it's on. Historically, we have a lot in our budget. The amount of, I think it was at one point seven and then went to eight thousand dollars for donations. And we have historically given a donation to outside the gates and Massey James. I don't recall what the amount is that you guys are giving to the bridge, but that was another donation that was, um, that was historically supposed to be done. And it wasn't done, and then you guys fixed that, so.
Thank you.
Those are the, I was thinking, I don't recall. And I, I want to say that was in five, but I can't recall exactly, so you have to look at that.
Massey James does not submit a request.
They have not, but when asked about what historically donations have gone to, Massey James has come up and asked for it in addition.
We'd like to say we've always done it on a first-time, first-serve basis.
Go ahead, a motion on the floor, any further discussion? What is our payment to the bridge?
Twelve hundred a year.
Okay, so twelve hundred plus three thousand, forty-two hundred, so less than fifty percent left, okay. That's fine, any further discussion? I'll call a question, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? What's that?
I didn't speak aye.
I am...
My voice didn't work, it didn't come.
That's fine, there were four ayes from the, from the commission. I am going to vote no, Betty, because I love the outside the gates. I have a personal opinion that the city collecting taxes and donating to private groups is... It's not wrong, it's not immoral, but I, well, I think it is almost. I, I don't believe in, in collecting tax money and donating to private organizations. So I'm voting no with the understanding that it is going to carry anyway. And like I say, outside the gates is, is, is one of the two or three best organizations in the city, and I, I love y'all, and, and please don't take anything except a, a personal political belief of my own about how taxes should be spent. Love you very much, glad it passed.
Just so everybody knows, we're not the only city in Florida that does this.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I'm a purist in some ways. Thank you, Betty, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item eight C, creation of a pickback contract with Pityon Auctioneers who are disposable surplus property, Mr. City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, Minister of Commission, you have in your map a pickback contract between the city, Pityon Auctioneers, based on a contract between Pityon Auctioneers and the school district, Osceola Contract. This is a contract to pick back, and services are adequate as low as we need. We will be paying the same fees that are paid by Osceola. Osceola contract is completely bid, and this is the lowest price bid for this particular service. Therefore, we recommend this to you.
So we have a proposal from staff, we have a motion for the commission.
I'll make a motion because I'd like to discuss it. I'll ask the best to approve.
That's second.
Second.
Have a motion, here's Commissioner Basso, second from Mr. Eckert, to approve the creation of a pickback contract with Pityon Auctioneers who are disposable surplus property, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bass.
It seems like this is the vehicle that we normally use. It also seems like we don't generate a lot of revenue from whatever it is we do. I'm just curious if, how difficult it would be to set up all the items on a website and assign an auction medium, if you will, and give people an opportunity and put a number on there that is to them to do, and, and see. I don't know what I'm talking about because I don't do all this computer stuff, okay? It's, it's not my bag. But if there's an opportunity for people in this community to get stuff rather than it getting popped someplace else and we generate more revenue from it, I'm not opposed to that. So if somebody that knows more about what I'm talking about, please, uh, please tell me I'm an idiot or whether you're mayor.
Well, you're not an idiot, but I think you're wrong on this. But I'll turn it over to, uh, to our City Administrator.
There are, let's see, where do I start? Uh, this particular organization does nothing but auction for counties such as Osceola, city, the land, and, and, and recently selected people. There are, you purchase a vehicle, there are title changes, certain requirements, note of vehicle, scrap vehicle, um, there are guarantees and warranties that we cannot offer, they can. They have a following too, Auctioneer's following. This one's in Southwood, they have a very regional following. And I don't know if those seem quite attractive because I don't, I've never bought one of these pieces of equipment. They are a little chunky. But there are people who somehow think that's great, as they were saying, one man is strong, one man is cool. So that's why I would suggest that we stay with this particular method of doing. One thing that we do have an option on, to make, uh, any practical, Commissioner Basso, we can go and take all this equipment down to Southwood, and they can put it in there for monthly auction. Or we can have them come up to us and hold the auction here in our property, advertise it locally, and our people then have a chance without any travel requirement to bid on the equipment. But there will be those who come, regulators are coming from, from Southwood to come here. So there will be competition for our local buyers, or at least the local buyers will have a better opportunity to, either be, be financing.
Okay, I, I was going to add to that, that, uh, I think this is one of those things where, because of bad actors in other cities and over history, um, in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety, you, you generate a third party that's, you know, independent third party to handle this kind of thing. It, it, it keeps everybody's middle double leg from facing you.
Well, I will support this endeavor, and please let us know exactly how big that volume checked in again, okay?
I will, I will do that.
It, it doesn't go in for peanuts on the, on the pennies on the dollar as to what it's actually valued at, but that's, that's why, and that history of other bad actors, and, and it's a shame that it's the way it's rolled with it. So we have a, a motion on the table to approve the pickback, uh, any additional discussion?
Um, I was wondering how different this is from the contracts that we previously have. This is less than since we're pickbacking. So it's my understanding that we voted a couple months back on using this contractor to dispose of surplus equipment, and took one of the trucks off or something.
No, what we were, I, we presented a list of equipment we considered scrap, and you then declared surplus except for the one truck. And that's the list that goes to this particular auction, a two-step process. First, you need to declare surplus, then being disposed.
So we never had a contract before?
No, we're not.
Okay, I understood.
Once you did bring up a point, I would like to, it's up to the commission. We do have one truck that is junked, that will not be included in the auction, and I'm not sure why the commission asked it not to declare junk. So it's up to you, which one do you want to be on?
Why isn't it included? Can we pull it?
It was pulled off the list by the commission. There was allegations that some of the various activities that occurred with that particular vehicle...
Oh, that truck.
That truck.
That truck, yes, that truck.
So yes, that was in the first part of the process, was to approve the full list. And then based on that list, we are now hoping to engage this auctioneer to complete the process. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. I'll, I'll look at it.
Make a motion, and the remaining trucks in the list, so we're disposed of.
For a second?
City Attorney just asked me to identify, I can't remember what year it is.
Ninety-nine dollars.
That truck.
Our assistant city attorney says ninety-nine dollars.
Okay. Any, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion for Commissioner Eckert, second from Commissioner Basso, to include the ninety-nine dollars truck in the surplus list that was removed before and put it back on the list. Any discussion? You're done, call a question, all, oh. So discussion on the floor, Mr. Cook, do you like to address us?
Yes.
When you're done, do you fill out a blue card?
Blue card?
When do we have, when do we have to discuss whether they're going to come here and do the auction, or we're going to take this out there?
Yeah, well, I'm going to discuss how we used to do it years ago. My view is right now, we're in a situation...
You grab that mic, it's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm off. But anyhow, my question is, basically, is how much is on the list? How many dollars are we talking about? How much of the big stuff, really good to risk, that has to be moved down to the auction? How much does that going to cost us to move that equipment down?
To the county.
In the organ auction, to do that? I'm just saying, is it, is it worthwhile to do it like we used to do, with these closed bids and envelopes and stuff, and just do it here and then? Let me go from there.
I, I have gathered through the whole process of learning surplus around, that there's a very little sentiment, the city, local citizens would like the opportunity to bid on, on the purchase. And so I have every intention of having the Pityon organization come to the city, advertise it, hold the auction here, and hold the road traffic, rather than travel. And there is a expense, as we have mentioned, there is an expense to transport a vehicle by city to...
It's on their needs, it's on their needs.
Yes, so I think, so we all become comfortable with it. I know there's some, some difficulty in this. I would suggest that you bring Pityon here and bid the auction locally, so it can hit it from the city.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cook. Ms. Prescott.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Kelly Prescott, John Street. I applaud Commissioner Rottweil for pulling that one. I, uh, the ninety-nine dollars, because it was a question. I believe that there is still, it is still, like, interesting how that learned to be strict in these places. I don't think, as you guys said, it did not have much, hold much value at this point. So what would be the rush to put that onto this, to this one, to this, uh...
Auction.
Auction, thank you, onto this auction.
The physical possession of the truck, it's already been documented by numerous people that I've heard about. And so the physical truck actually being here isn't one of her clue from any of the controversy that occurred over that truck and what had occurred to it by other means. And so keeping it in our store room, taking up space and stuff like that, is just going to sit there and running up, towing it to the scrapyard by the time we decide that we're done dragging the issue through the lot.
Well, the, the truck in question is unable to be moved at this point in the condition that it is now. Towing it, it shouldn't be the question because it would have to be towed because everything is removed. The vehicle also has quite an, um, an array of things in the back of the truck. Is that garbage, is that equipment? You know, that, that's a question I don't have an answer for. Probably staff has an answer for that. But I, I still don't think, that's my opinion, that if there is any question whatsoever on a vehicle, and that it should not go to auction. I'm sure in the future, there will be more items to go to auction, and that one truck that is sitting in the, on the property, not taking up space. I would put it safe. Thank you.
To me, it's really less about the truck, because we don't give you much to it. To me, it's more about putting the issue to rest. If there was an issue, um, and it needed some sort of legal action to be taken, it should have been taken or written, and it hasn't. So I don't really feel like talking about it anymore. I'm ready to move on. And that's my interest in moving on.
Can I say something? Well, the item is not to give the auction because this commission decided that nothing was going wrong with it. Not to press charges, wanting it disappeared and came back in that condition. Not to press charges when it had disappeared and came back in that condition. So I would agree with you if there was another situation, but you guys kind of made that happen. It was taken out of the hands of the police when you guys said that it was allowed to leave, and the story went back and forth.
I like your long force.
The medium question was brought to City Staff. I have not been directed to do an investigation into it, it was resolved, City Staff told me, and that's all.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Or is that up to City Staff to investigate that, to put this to rest?
Call County Administrator, what he said, was put the rest, City Staff handled this.
According to Mr. Eppenborn, I'm sorry, if you repeat, it's nice to be here.
Did the chief say he got information from you guys to put the issue to rest?
Well, that truck has been the subject of rumors and nuances, who did what, when. If you might recall, the public yard was relatively open to a number of individuals, even a drop in keys and, so we really don't know who was at the truck, who did whatever to the truck. We don't know if any truck pieces are missing or used by other city vehicles. And we'd almost impossible to go back and try to reach the reason for it, find out what happened. It's just, as I said, it is not junk, and my desire is getting out of the yard so we can dispose of it, as you know. I like that term.
May I, may I?
I think we're getting another blue card on this topic, is that right?
If that truck was given permission to leave property, we worked on for the transmission, we worked on, why did it go on to a, an employee's property? I mean, there's so many OSHA complications right there.
We have, we have gone through this numerous times.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that there's too much speculation.
I know what you're saying. We have gone through this numerous times in numerous commission meetings, and the commission just voted to scrap the truck, and it's not an agenda item to...
Did you?
Yeah, I think we did. Maybe we didn't, no, maybe we did not, yeah. But we have, we have gone through this many times.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't stand that. I do, I have another blue card.
Jennifer Mulligan, 271 West Manhattan. I have one question. If you guys have such a question, there are cameras all over public works. Why have the cameras not been pulled? To see who took the truck off the property, to see where the truck went. I mean, there's a real, you have citizens that are concerned, and the city has the means to do something about it and prove who took the truck, who did that. Why are we not looking at cameras? There's cameras all over, there's cameras between here and there. I just don't understand why it's not being looked into. I understand it's not a big deal to some people, but to some people, it was a viable truck, it was a working truck when it left the premises, and many things have been said back and forth. That's just my question. If we can put this to rest with a camera, with a, this person took it out of the yard, this person brought it back in the yard, this is the time it went out of the yard? You guys have cameras on public works for a reason.
I'm not sure what those cameras may or may not have. I do know, this is what the city administrator just said, was that, that access to the yard has been loose.
Right, and you have this.
And it's been a long time, but that truck has been not used, and where any one part of that has gone would be very difficult to ascertain.
And answer to some of yours, we know who took it, we know where it went. The, what the administrator was talking about was what all happened to it, whether it was done at the person's property, or whether people got in and took parts off of it before or after that time, and the, whether or not it was appropriate for the administrator or staff or whoever gave them permission to take it home to work on, or whether that was appropriate, those are the questions. I mean, it, it could have been a chainsaw that the person did it. You know, it's the truck, it's, it's the action that occurred, not the truck itself that's the problem. So that's what needs to be addressed, is the action that occurred.
Okay, well, any further discussion on whether or not to include the truck in the auction items? Hearing none, all question. All in favor of including the truck in the auction items, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries with four ayes and one no from Commissioner Rottweil. Next on the agenda is item eight, E, approval of engineering proposal for design and planning water distribution system improvements.
As far as the commission, as you know, the city's master plan, water master plan, prioritized a number of improvements, the majority of them to be instructed in the next several years using money from the state development fund. To do that, we need to first enter into the government state development fund, or what's called the engineering and planning phase, which we have funded due to proposal from the engineering firm we use, to actually do the engineering and planning for the thirteen projects, as I recall, I think we've seen that a storm over. The projects that we intend to accomplish to put our water distributions in fact in good shape. But what we're really talking now about is approving a contract that will be funded by SRF if we are, if we do our applications correctly. As part of the application process, we'll also have a resolution later on the agenda that is not for this particular project, but it's another harvest requirement for the water meter, funding for the actual application alone. There are multi-steps involved in this entire process, and if I explain it to you, for you, the question I'm saying, but this is one of the elements we need to vote into the packet for the SRF, called request for inclusion process. That's what they passed on this, on the wisdom of this particular application, as they did for meters for us. And once they pass that, with all the documentation, this being one of them, then we go to the actual loan application, which is essentially pre-funded and pre-approved from the RF IFOs. And we then, and start pulling down the funds necessary, first for the engineering and the planning, and then later for each of the individual projects as they become a loan. So this is the beginning start of a probably, I would say, eight to ten-year project that will be hopefully completed during a shorter timeframe, but quicker than that long, resulting in significant improvements to our water master system, our water system. So with that preamble, we have a city engineer to describe the contract, and any questions to make?
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Do we have the motion to approve engaging on engineering within this process?
I'm voting to, once again, for special purposes, most to approve the engineering being from, zero second.
Second.
One of my questions was, does, are we required to just have to bid?
Derek is hiding somewhere behind me, but because the project this meant we have to go through is known as the...
CCNA?
CCNA project.
Sort of a project, right?
Yes.
Second.
In, in CCNA projects, if you request quotes from engineering firms, are, if a study is of a value, I think it's five hundred thousand dollars, and you can go out for separate part fee or qualifications from an engineer, you wouldn't be able to administer that directly to already selected engineering firms? The other component of that is that's just for studies. For construction projects, if the estimate is under four million dollars, you do not have to go out for quotes for engineering services, and for under that threshold of four million dollars. So the proposal can be requested by the city administrator, the city commission, and that's where we stand with it.
Explain the CCNA period, Derek.
The CCNA pact in the state legislature essentially allows us to advertise for engineers willing to be our city engineer, and then we would go through a process of interviews, recommendations to the commission. We did that, and on engineering was a successful competitor for the selection to be our, our city engineer. With that, then we reduce on engineering for projects just like this. So there is no competitive bidding process with engineering, architecture, surveying.
All services.
All services.
All professional services.
All professional services.
I think the short answer was state laws supersede city, and so the, the city ordinance says we have to put things out to bid, doesn't apply.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty good summary. Basically, what state law says, instead of have to go out to bid every time you have an engineering firm, you can go out with what's called a continuing contract. A continuing contract allows you to bid for that contract with an engineer firm, and bigger cities have multiple engineering firms with a continuing contract. And then they'll pick, or get proposals from them, or pick which one to get, or get a proposal from. But it allows for you not to have to go out to bid as long as the project cost does not exceed a certain dollar threshold, or the study does not exceed a certain cost, or if you have a contract that is work of a specified nature without any limitation on dollars, which is a little off, that you can contract to represent with that engineering firm, and that's the one that's going to provide the work. And if we had a ten million dollar project that would exceed a continuing contract as allowed under the law, we would have to go out to bid for engineering on that project.
And I believe we went through that CCNA process and engaged upon about, six months ago, eight months ago? Maybe a year? I'm not, I'm terrible with that type of time.
Between six months and a year, you actually have selected two engineers.
Thank you.
At that meeting, Pond and Duffin, and also CPH, which is another engineer firm. Sorry. Good evening, my name is Eric Williams, City Administrator. Happy to be here.
Where did Lee St. Louis Sports were coming from?
State of your mind, well, alone. It's a loan of forgiveness.
Any other questions? Give me a second. Okay. We have a discussion on the motion to hand. Hearing none, call the question. All in favor of engaging on, as presented here tonight by staff, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Williams, come in here.
Thank you very much. We're proud of maintaining service city work ethic.
And we're, I am one, and very excited that we're moving forward. This is the first major step forward since the water master, master work went, this first major step towards, towards getting, getting something done. It's very exciting. I've only been working on a great team once now, you've been working on a fair, well longer than that, so thank you for your continued work.
Right, thank you.
And thank you all. And, and that's, that's very true. What we were just discussing here is that it's good to discuss these things openly, especially with a half million dollar contract, to have it on record, and for people to have an opportunity to ask questions, and, and not feel like we're doing it behind the scenes here, right here. Now we have item F, creation of a piggyback contract to purchase and install a new water meter system. Mr. City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, we started this process of getting a SRF loan, state development fund loan for the meter replacements, perhaps six to nine months ago, I don't recall that anymore. And we were basing on a bid that had been received by the city of Sanford, previous to our discussion with this particular company, that we would like to do the same thing. It was for the replacement of their meters. The city of Sanford took one year to go from receiving, opening the bids, negotiating, and final contract. I have no idea why it took them one year, but it took them one year. In the meeting, in the time between first, opening the bids and signing the contract, there was a material increase, the materials only, not the labor, of three percent. Sanford did agree to that, and we were piggybacking them on lower prices from the city of Sanford based on their competitive bid, that they opened this, probably, maybe fourteen months ago now. The city turns adaptive that another piggyback ordinance, they're basically adoption of Sanford ordinance, and you would have the same conditions, the same prices, identical Samfords, are not having to go through their competitive bid process. So we would recommend it to you, to see you. It is a system that we've described to you a couple of times, and will have one central receiving point in the city, or radio read meters, will read all the meters every day, bid four times every day, will have every warning, will have lists of meters that are potentially bad, so we can notify citizens, you may have a leaky meter, you may have a water leak in your house, something like that, instead of waiting three months, we can get eventually, I would recommend we get on a monthly billing basis, so people can better manage a bunch of their funding for the monthly utility bills, the quarterly utility bill, which some of our citizens, it's gonna be a little long to keep on time. So it's a positive step in the right direction, but the first thing you need to manage, you need to adopt a piggyback contract.
Got motion to create a piggyback contract to purchase and install the new water meter system.
Do I have a second?
No. I'll second. Have a motion for Commissioner Bishop, a second for Commissioner Masso, to create the piggyback contract to purchase and install the new water system, as presented by staff. Any further, any discussion?
Question. I believe we need to talk, talk about the funding of this, have we, I assume we have procured the funding?
Yes. And what are the terms of that?
The, the terms are, I don't recall the exact percentage, I think it's two percent, right in the neighborhood of two percent. It is forty-one percent forgivable. We have an authorized limit of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. This particular project, the bonus is only seven hundred and fifty. And the purpose is, everybody here gets something, so we'll have, maybe we'll do three, three eyes and then, and have the system complete, having to go back to the will, draw more money out of the state development fund. So we have gone through the RFI process, they have put us in a list for the funding, loan application, we're going in hopefully next week, and there is not, there's no question we'll get it because we're going in pre-approved. So the number will be here probably before the meters. Now, in a sense, we only draw the kind of money that we need. Now, in a sense, we only draw down the money when we need it. And if you don't draw down all eight hundred and fifty thousand because you need to pay interest up and have to pay back only the money that you draw down, and forty-one percent of what we draw down is forgiven by the state.
When does that happen? When do you know we're going to get forty percent of it?
Oh, we've already been told.
Oh, you've already been told.
We've got a letter.
So our actual costs are going to be sixty percent of seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
Thank you.
And we haven't paid that over twenty years too, which is at a steady rate. So it's really very advantageous operation.
Thank you. It's fifty-nine percent. We're talking big money here. Any further discussion or questions? This is another one that's a big deal. We've been trying to get these meters fixed for a long time, so I'm very happy that this contract is going through. I'm glad we got this grant process approved and incompletion. So it's a red letter day. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Hallelujah. Next, item G, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. Mr. City Administrator.
What goes along with the previous discussions is a resolution that required by the loan application process, the state wants to have the loan resolution specified that we have the authority to take a loan out. We have our municipality, all the things that Scott has to put in there and swear to, all that good stuff. But it's another part of the process for the meters. If you've just done the contract to actually purchase the meters, this is a funding requirement. The motion carries on the end. It's a resolution that, you recall last time, we had an issue with not advertising the resolution at appropriate time, embarrassing the staff. This does not have an advertising requirement, so you don't have to worry about that one. I just thought of that to let you know the mayor should double check. But anyway, this resolution will be another part of the package with the loan application.
This is resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. A resolution of the City of Lake Hallenflower relating to the state revolving fund loan program making fine deeds, authorizing the loan application, authorizing the loan agreement, establishing pledged revenues, designating authorized representatives, providing assurances, providing for conflicts, severability, and effective date. So I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. Got a second? Got a motion from Mr. Bishop, a second from Mr. Rutherford to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. Any further discussion?
Mr. Commissioner, why are we getting this resolution as an incomplete resolution? Why don't we have the financial officer's information in it?
The finance officer did give you the information, but unfortunately, I didn't at that time put it into the resolution. But he gave us the dollar numbers to go in there. Scott provided the legal lease, so we had that. And I just didn't want to, okay, you can hold it back if you like. Do it another month, but I just don't know when. Guess I'm asking the trust.
Do you know about what those dollar amounts are?
Well, for the, well, the dollar amounts are, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars. Well, that's the amount for approved or loan, seven, eight, fifty, seven, I mean, seven fifties, but terrible lots of labor. So we know those. The real question we had, Scott actually wanted Zach to check on, were the sources of the revenues, chapter one eighty and seven eighty, to set the chapter of the sources of the loans.
Those blanks are titles of a series of bond, basically, I think, something that you gotta have, you gotta have the right one, otherwise.
This is not ours to do, you trust me.
I promise I won't sign it until the proper numbers are in there. And it's not a dollar amount. It's a, it's a balance. It's an identification of the bond series or something, something like that.
The bond number, and the important thing is it's pledging net water revenues. That's the, that's the pledge, mere pledge that's the collateral revenue structure to repay the loans.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any? And one no?
Yeah.
I can definitely press the things.
Okay.
Roger, just wish to say aye up here. But this, you made your point, and it's still a passage to be reviewed. And I know that's what you want.
And I agree with you. If it were a dollar amount, I would definitely, please, very definitely. But it's tied to that.
Our revenue, revenues are a dollar.
I think it's the source of the revenue that's, well, maybe we can get a further explanation from the magistrate. But I don't think it's a dollar amount.
No, it's going to change. Your, your, your pledge revenues are going to change every year. You may change your water rates. Revenue's not going to be the same. So it says, the revenue pledged for the repayment of the loan are the net water revenues. So that, that's the best.
That's where it's coming from.
That's where it's coming from. Like, like, say, our sales tax, I might be able to sell a stash of them every year. Whatever it is, the pledge, you got a personal lien. That's the same as the net water. Then I remember that was plugged in by our finance director. You can't plug a number in because the number will change. You don't know what the number, you have no idea what the net revenues, water revenues are going to be next year.
But we are, they're not asking for a payment.
Oh, yeah, twenty years. It's a twenty-year one.
And each year that number will change.
But they have a personal lien on their revenues to the extent that they can.
They know that in the financial field that they do estimates over the years on projection of what they could be. They might be a whole of a higher mill, well, a quarter of a hundred percent. But still having, having that in is.
They probably already have that to improve loan. But what all this resolution says, revenues pledged for the repayment of the loan are, what is the revenue?
Well, I don't know why we're arguing this because we've already proposed.
No, it's not a dollar.
It's not a source of explanation. We don't want to.
But I think we need to make sure we have the, you know, that's why, you know, the actual form of this document is given to us by the state. I plugged in some information that I could, gave the things that look, you need to have mine extracted from plugging the rest. Need the one that plugged in net water revenues and plugged in, basically, parat section for you build that. And so if there's something in there that still needs to be added, we'll add it in there. But there's, it's just, your, your pledge of the revenue stream, and what that revenue stream is, net water.
The good thing is, is that once we install these meters, the revenue stream will be healthier. And the other good thing is if, if need be, we have the ability to raise rates in order to pay them. I don't think we have to do that, but, but we have that built. It's just a bit, it's all of this. Yeah, I, I understand. I, I, I'm not trying to make an argument. I just want to make sure that the questions are answered. And that's a very reasonable question. If questions weren't answered before, I would, I would wear that. Thank you. Item AH, Urges Command.
I have asked Lee on at least three occasions if we could please put together a management, an emergency management plan. On one occasion, I'm sure this was a joke, I was told, we have one. The damaged cones, we call our. Okay, that's all well and good, but if that is a plan, please know. Please know that some could possibly perceive this as collusion. But most importantly, we need to realize these funds will be paid by the city and most likely not reimbursed by FEMA. Eight months in from Hurricane Ian, and none of our paperwork has been accepted and moved past our caseworker. We are on our second one of those. They have asked several times, where are our bids? And stated we didn't even follow our own purchasing policies. Meanwhile, the county, who had millions of damages, has made it all the way to the contacts, contract stage with the state. Also, if we do have any plans to piggyback and use the county, now is the time to submit that request. It cannot be done after the storm hits. We need to make a decision. Because we don't have a plan at all.
Mr. Commissioner?
The terminology of, I would prefer to call, what you're suggesting of things, we have a contract with one of the national degree removal firms that will come in, remove all the grade, all the paperworks, and all the forms, et cetera, et cetera. That, that's the, their main degree removal process. The county has entered into, I believe, three such contracts. They used, probably both most extensively in the last storm. They're very efficient in what they do. It's all they do. And they will process it more quickly than we do simply because they were on the processing to that particular company. But they're also way more expensive, and they don't always get back a hundred percent of the money. And that's, that's one drawback. The other is, they, sometimes when you call them, they're not there. And this comes from my discussions with George, Rick, Rick, Rick.
Rick Malters?
Yes. And he cautioned me that add multiple contracts, you're not allowed to call one of them. And the storm hits down in Miami and comes up to the center of the state, guess where they're going to be hurt? It would be Miami and where could be afterthought. So add more than one that you can call on for leverage. They also charge significantly more money than, yes, is reimbursed by the federal government. We have never used a firm like that. We have used internal contracts with Allen and his Big Dog Services. We use the same dollar rates that they have, which was at least seven dollars and some cents per giving. Seven fifty-seven per giving yard, which is slightly less than what the county was being charged. But again, that's something that we have to reconcile, all of the, all of the forms to put them together. And it's not that they haven't accepted our work, they've accepted all of our work. They just keep asking for more and more and more, and they ask for repayment submissions. Can you send that to us again? Can you send that to us again? Can you send that to us again? We're on our second program management, our second or third supervisor that they report to. And we are making progress. It is smaller than the other forms, we should. But if you want to participate, we can just do a simple piggyback contract to piggyback onto the terms that the county has. You will pay those rates, and your staff will convert with the charge of having to add to all the paperwork. But that's really the concept. And you also, when you're in a county contract, you have no control over who gets done first, second, third, fourth. And I think last time, those, the county articles were kind of way out, we were finished with the, we picked up, burned it, and gone. We had no control over that. Matter of fact, when you call, find out where the county is for our articles, as I did, develop public works, and they ship you over to protocol, and some answering service and a memo or something. Just mark it down in the list. So that's something to be considered, too. You want to get the service, you get it back to local contractors. But it does save the paperwork, and right now we're taking no fantastic idea of the time for it. It's up to the question to get out and do it. We can get back the contracts next in June meeting, just for those, piggyback arrangements. It'll be done. Contracts with the county are booked for another two or three years, so we can piggyback on those contracts.
But there is a timeline that that has to be done by. It can't be done after the storm. It has to be done prior. And I don't have a problem using the local, but according to what FEMA was asking and have said in the past that we have to have bids. They want to see our bids and why we chose the person we did, right?
They, here's where it started, and it's almost over. They will tell them they will not accept the piggyback bid, but when it's all over and done with, they accept.
Well, that wasn't a true piggyback, because a true piggyback, you've used that contractor to do the work, and you have to get permission from them to piggyback. But now you just sat there and said that the county is way more expensive and you're not going to get back a hundred percent. But yet you chose their price to piggyback off of.
Or, yes.
So then they were way more expensive.
For the degree removal.
Right.
I didn't believe there's a separate bid for the administrative or the, I'm actually.
They, they have separate monitoring contracts.
Right. They have, yes, yes.
And that's a separate number. So basically, we piggybacked the degree removal, which was Allen and his subcontractors. What we didn't contract with was the administrative part.
But you still didn't get bids.
For that, no, we didn't. We used in-house courses, too.
Well, no, for the degree removal, you didn't get bids.
Well, we piggy.
No, you didn't.
We, we.
We used the rate.
We used the rate?
Yeah, you used the rate. You did not piggyback.
Actually, three percent less, three cents less for giving.
But you know for a fact that FEMA has been asking, where were those bids? You didn't bid. And according to our own purchasing policies, we have to get bids. Right?
You got those bid available. They're competitive really well, and we accepted that.
It's not, at the end, the important thing is we give refund to FEMA.
Can't, can't be in here.
This is turn off. But the important part is that we give refund to FEMA. So let us know when we give refund it or not.
Oh, I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay. June first hurricane season, or are you getting ready for the season with getting all these things set up now?
Well, with the, this is the question that the commission may wish to enter into, a national contract. I will certainly get copies of those and then we'll have all of the piggyback contract prepared with the city attorney. And if it looks like there may be something prior to June eighth, we can enter into those. You wish, I'll have them available on special meeting. It's up, it's up to the commission, if you want to.
I was at a county meeting just a few days ago, Monday morning, where they got a report from National Weather Service on the upcoming hurricane season. We are in El Nino here, which is a wonderful thing, brings along the, two favorite words, wind shear, that tends to destroy hurricanes before they hurt anybody. So it's apparently going to be a low production year for hurricanes. Of course, that doesn't, you know, the one that hit you is still hitting you. It's like not receiving very many punches from a Pisces, and it only takes one. But, but it should be a good year. I don't think anything becoming early in the season in particular because of that. And we can definitely look at some of those contracts if you'd like to get back with us at the next meeting for some options there. Probably a good thing to start a conversation.
Yeah, the context of this was about what is our emergency management plan? Who knows what, when? And I would like to think we do have a plan. And if we don't, it'd probably be a good idea, because if something happened and you're not here because you can't get here because of tree damage or fell in the car or whatever, does someone else have a plan that they can execute in your absence? Mr. Coakford, you want to speak?
required to. If you don't have your own emergency management plan under state law, you're under the county's emergency. So when we say an emergency management plan, maybe you want to have a plan that's kind of out on what would happen in the event of emergency, and they may not meet requirements from the state's emergency management plan in pretty detail. So we may have an emergency management plan, say, in the event of emergency, these are our policies and procedures, but we will still meet hundreds of counties' emergency management plans. So then declare, we don't have to declare state emergency, declare if we're... You should have been declared. But when you say emergency management, there is a state law decision to make first.
Mr. Cook?
I like that one, too, today. I wish they had been involved, because we've been up in her feelings for almost 30 years, 27 days, 37. And I go back and down to them, and we got involved with that. There was a big problem, you know, this outfit, what they call health, was doing most all cleanup. Actually, I sent on some of the work on him. But the big thing is, like they said, yes, maybe it's a little slower getting our money, but it's not slower getting out there and getting those trees moved, getting the ambulances, fire trucks in the air, getting it done. That's the main thing. And the bad thing is, yes, okay, sometimes it takes a little longer with FEMA to get it. Just one quick story. When it came down to the time of burning, everything down here, down the land, and they said, FEMA said, oh, well, no, you can't do that. Well, gone from down the back, 100%. We went to FEMA, and we got it straightened out. All this way to do, we've got tickets, waits, and so forth. Believe it or not, we burned everything right here. We were going to get it repaired. You know what? Yes. It took almost six and a half months to get 146,000 dollars for burning that stuff. It took a little time until they got it. So FEMA is kind of funny when it comes down to doing stuff. They do that. Like I said, maybe it will take us a little longer to get the money. That doesn't make any difference. Who gets out here, and we get that clean up. And you know what? The order is right. We always went through to the county. And they sent a loader in here to, Harold, every time, and he worked one more, they worked together. But we did work through the county, that's correct. And that's probably what people say. But I just don't want to go on this outside stuff, because they're busy in other county where it's a bit, it doesn't work. Thank you.
We do need to get our bids. We do need to get our bids, because FEMA is becoming more strict than what they used to be in the past because of cities policing them. So they're starting to be more strict with their rules. So, you know, and I do know the questions that they had asked in the county meetings, I sat in on them.
Please, are there any reasons we can't put our PFP bids for doing work that may or may not happen?
Well, we already have the three contracts for the county, which we have the national contracts.
Yeah, we have that, but did we use any of those?
No, we did not use those.
I've seen the beauty, that it's not, it really doesn't take much of an RFP out, that local businesses can sign and say, blah, 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 here it is. I mean, if that helps, you can repay for it down the road. But that just seems like a small act.
We could use the county's RFP template. We'd have to probably modify it slightly, but we could use that for that.
My first thought on that is, is we could do an RFP, or we could do a true piggyback, like you're saying. What we could announce is not a true piggyback, it's just simply taking a rate from what the county is contracting, and then creating our own contract, which in a world logic reason, makes sense that people can get it. Because this is what would seem to be the beginning, okay?
Yeah.
If it creates a situation where we can't collect our money, because we didn't do things exactly the way they wanted to, and the only other thing we need to do is put an RFP out there, get our local contractors to put it in, to give us some numbers, the bands, or send your company. I understand what you're doing. And, I mean, it makes perfectly good sense. I'm not one to write, say, in check.
I have direction.
Okay. Like I said, when we get paid or not get paid, that's what we input.
As soon as you can project, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Mr. Spazian, did you want to speak to this item?
I do.
If you would.
My...
If you would, get your name and address, and use my phone.
George Spazian, 150 West New York Avenue, LA. Only question about the bid system is, if it goes out to bid, would it be based purely on budget, or like lowest cost? Because I'd be worried if the lowest bid, and then they're like, oh, cool, we're going to use that, and then all of a sudden, all of them are like, only two chainsawers and a pickup truck, you know?
Well, that's just it. That's why you have to have a little one first.
Well, no, I'm not, no, I'm not saying have a little one bid. What I'm saying is, like, five people would do a bid.
We would probably, obviously, minimum equipment you would need. What you're going to see that happens, and one of, first question...
It's weird about quality of a price.
Have we ever been denied FEMA? This is the first time we've been in this type of process. In my mind, we've never been denied FEMA. Secondly, I've dealt with FEMA, it's been, standard most operative design is rotate these inspectors, because they just don't want to, I'll tell you, we're out of money right now. Can you wait till the next budget year? What they do is they send in a new team, and they ask you for all the same stuff. So, but I do know, if you get, just this last one, y'all were cleaned up quicker than the other cities I represent. Halle Do, piggyback, have one of those big companies, y'all were cheaper and faster than Halle Do. Now, that, you know, FEMA wants to prevent fraud, that's what they try to do. I can almost sure, usually they spend more money preventing fraud than the fraud costs, because they require you to have these professional monitors and all this other equipment, and they throw the cost of doing hurricane removal, degree removal, to the point where they're saying, we're preventing fraud. Yeah, but it's costing more to prevent fraud than that fraud actually costs. And not this last hurricane, maybe the ones before that. When, never when Houston flooded, and South Florida got hit, all those national contractors that the county had wouldn't show up. They were pumped, because they were getting paid more money down out of South Florida and Houston, and then they were under contract for here. So yeah, you have a contract, but how are you going to enforce that contract? You know, you need, you need to think about what's going to happen. I can check and see what the county did to them. County wanted to sue them, and it's kind of comical that degree removal companies said, well, we've got to force a sure cause. You know, we have hurricane, that's why you're there. You know, you can't claim that you can't perform because of hurricane, because you're there to clean up after hurricane. But I don't know how those lawsuits ever ended up, but it was a mess. Local contractors had helped a lot of cities around here. And then the other thing I would, if you want to give local preference, I hear that, local, then you've got to put that in your bid specs. Because if you offer bids for, for degree removal, you're not just going to get local, you're going to get probably some national companies coming in to bid here possibly. And if you want to give a local preference, you have to put that in your bid specs to let the bidder know you won't be giving preference to local vendors. If you do that by, you have, your business has to be located within somebody's square of... However you want, you can do it in the county, you can do it in the city, whatever will be local preference. But you, you know, it could be, you know, 5%, whereas if the local bidder is 55% of a national added, non-local bidder, then, you know, we would consider that first of the... First name basis, with at least two thirds of the commission. Yeah. So, it's, but then some people say what happens, I hear, and they'll say, when you do the local preference, you just guarantee that the local bidder is going to be 5% more. You just raise the price, because they really know that they can bid more and still get the contract. So firstly, I don't know that, because I know there's been a couple times that local has gone through this similar process. And to my knowledge, we have never not been paid. If we haven't been paid, it was never what my intention was. So, but if we could do, there's a difference between, there's a good point between what we've done and piggybacking the county, and that's going to be our own bid for all the bid, a local preference. So they should have local contractors that did not pay for that, nationwide. You know, when you get a hurricane hits, it's damaged all across the country, and they may not come here. You know, without our last forms. We're small potatoes. There's a list of people wanting, or a list of cities wanting... There's priorities. And you lose control. You don't have control over... But I think this is worth it, to the item at the next meeting, to... What we can do is, you know, they can bring back the contracts, they need the contracts the county had. I'm sure they would let us piggyback. Or these are bid spec expectations, so we could go out and look for. And they could probably gather up just, you know, timing and costs from other jurisdictions and cities in the county, who piggybacked the county did, and see what their turnaround time was. And obviously, we know we got to get paid, so I don't know if they're, how, how short are we on being paid over the years? I mean, a lot of cities, it does take a time to get paid by FEMA, and how do we sit right for this particular hurricane? How do we sit with other jurisdictions in terms of payment? Are we the only one who hasn't been paid, and everybody else is done, or we're pretty much in line with everybody else, going through the same process? But I know I've dealt with this for other cities, where it's dealing with FEMA, and they just rotate people in and out, and then they start asking the same questions over and over. And I just walk away with the conclusion that they just don't have money, so they're just dragging on the process until the next budget year where they get money to pay. They would just say, look, okay, it was time, it'd be a lot easier.
Sometimes they rotate those people out, because the ones there are tired, beaten heads against the park wall, not getting what they really request.
So I don't think that's why they move. I think they, they, they were, I think there's a difference. Mr. Cook, we have this on the agenda for the next meeting, do you want to...
No, no, just a quick...
Okay.
We are one of the only, I don't even need that. We are one of the only cities that are doing what we're doing. We've been doing it since 1000, 1000 years, and I'm here. We can burn, we burn our stuff. You don't realize how much money that's saving. We still have to go through and pick it from FEMA, and do everything else and get paid. But we are one of the only cities that burn our own debris.
And that is another point. FEMA wants to know where the hell those ashes are. They've asked for those ashes, I can't tell you.
The spread over here.
Yeah, but that's not how I would...
Elliot, they've asked that question, being, at least three or four times, we can tell the same answer, they're right there, and Mitchell Field cover over the dirt.
Yes.
And two weeks later, they ask the second question, where are the ashes? Two weeks later, they ask you, where are the ashes? You think I'm making a joke of it?
It's not a joke.
It's normal.
Yeah, it is.
FEMA can be very funny. If you pass that, it makes it easier.
Well, we'll look forward to your enlightening us for this meeting.
Yes.
Seriously, I'm not saying that. Next agenda item is item 9, quasi judicial hearing, certificate of appropriateness. Have there been any ex parte conversations that any of the commissioners would like to disclose at this time?
But that's cleaned out, so I can just say it now.
I think now, yes.
I did speak with Ms. Kayla Troy in reference to her wanting to speak tonight about the property of 259 West Main Street.
I also had a conversation with Kayla Troy, but I don't think we...
It's fine, you can just tell her. And I had a conversation with, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir.
It's Brian.
Brian. I had a conversation with the property over there as well, at the beginning of this meeting, or right before this meeting. Which is fine for us to talk, we just have to disclose what we have for the record. Okay, so, do I have a motion? I'm making a motion, we accept the certificate of appropriateness for items A, B, C, and E.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Riker, second from Commissioner Morales, to approve these certificates of appropriateness for items A, B, C, and E. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all the bear say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, say no. Close carry unanimously, so we'll move to item D, 259 West Main Street. Mr. Senator, would you like to introduce this?
Bobby Morales, who is, he knows our consultant, historic preservation board, who has been involved in this particular process, from that perspective. I could later then review on discussions I have, will be able to on the side more patient, first of all. There's no...
Mr. Commissioner, Bobby Morales, City's historic design consultant. I don't know if there are any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Morales about this?
I'm ready.
I'm not curious, why didn't you close?
I wanted to hear the presentation from Ms. Troy. Can I, can I jump in at this point?
Sure, I was getting ready to call on you any second.
Okay.
So you're, no, you're not on line all, thank you. And over to Ms. Troy.
Kayla Troy, 664 McKenzie Road. We are on this item for a couple things. Mr. Morales was reviewing, based on the historic board's request, to basically do a report showing his findings if we were compliant with the historic architectural requirements for this house. So I, that was initially why Bobby's here, so I don't know, you know, that was that segment of it. I do want to talk about the sidewalks, as we are trying to get a CO for this house. So I don't know, Lee, if we need to do anything with Bobby first, or...
Well, this particular agenda item is historic, so I would... Mr. Morales, I suggest we do Bobby first, so he can help.
Just a little background, the HPV had some conditions on the left. The report that I did of the contents included in the agenda, most of the items that were of concern have been taken care of, I actually expected it today. And all of the missing items have been incorporated, so they're completed, I have pictures of that. The, there were some conditions that the HPV had concerns about, particularly the brick weight code. The brick was something that was under a previous modification, it was supposed to be white. The, and we know that during construction, owners, builders, make decisions, and it's just dynamic, and there's schedules to be met, deadlines to be met. So decisions were made, and then we saw some of these variations from that last modification, and so we called to question some of the items. Right now, there are only two items that I see that remain of concern with the HPV, and that would be that there's not a cap on the brick weight code, and that the lights on the garage door are something that was added, the actual, the flashlights on the garage doors were added, and don't work well with the current arch over the garage doors. And that was a concern at the beginning. Those are the only two outstanding items. I was taken out of the sidewalk issue. So are we having to, today, do we need to miss this? Is there any other... Any questions?
Yes. And this is, this is the brick weight code was originally approved for brick roll-off cap, painted white, application, claims, manufacturer, product, manufacturer, carrier brick roll-off, thin brick application. What is a thin brick application? I'm an accomplished base, and I'm a general contractor, so I have some knowledge.
Thin brick is like a veneer, it's like a...
So are we having to, do they have any other issues?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes. And as this, this is the brick weight scope was originally approved for brick roll-off cap, painted white, applicant. Plains, manufacturer, product, not manufacturer, carried brick roll-off, thin brick application. What is a thin brick application? I'm an accomplished basement, and I'm a general contractor, so I have some knowledge.
Thin brick is like a veneer. It's like a, literally a thin brick shape, set in by hand.
They're like a half inch thick?
Very thin. We got them from Old Castle. We reached their, all of their reps. There was no sort of roll-off because it doesn't serve a functional purpose.
Yeah, it doesn't. Okay, thank you. That's really not a brick, that's just.
No, it's, it's cosmetic.
It's almost tied.
Almost, yeah. It's supplied lots of way.
Thank you.
I'd like to join you to sign it.
If I could ask you, sir, what is your relation to this question?
Oh, I'm, I'm the owner.
Okay, I'll draw the clock, okay.
So.
If you would, if you would introduce yourself and give your address.
Yes, Dave Rogers, 259 West Main Street, hopefully, sooner or later. So we're close. So yeah, so the way we understood it, Bobby was representing the historic board, he came out and said essentially there was one thing that we needed to do was put the cap, that step of cap on the apartment, which we did within four days. So we were under the impression that's all we needed to do, you know, to move forward from the historic board approval process. So that's the one correction we made. And, you know, we want to make sure we're compliant with the city, and present a beautiful home that's going to be able to gain weight, that's going to show. And so from our understanding, after meeting with Bobby a week ago, that was the one thing we needed to do, and we did it. And compliant with his representation of the board. And I, I thought that was all we needed to do, and we were very beautiful. So I just wanted to state that, to make sure that you guys understood that. We weren't trying to sway them or do anything else. He recommended that, and we complied and performed that recommendation.
Thank you, sir. We do try to make this a collaborative process rather than combat it, as much as we possibly can. Sometimes it devolves from that, but I appreciate your willingness and your attitude towards making this all work. Really do appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
So where do we stand as far as, do we have a?
So the HPP, basically, gave me authority to make the final determination on site. They certainly trust what I decide. While the, the brick itself being the brick, this is supposed to be historic, this, historic town. The brick, even though it's soap, or it's thin, still should be convincing as it is real brick. And so real brick would never have, a weight scope, a real brick would never have just finished with a raw, running brick on the top. There would have been, there would have had a roll-off sometime. They would even do a seder for soldier course, okay? So I understood when the manufacturer said, they don't make a roll-off for this, we stand. So I was asked by the board, what solutions do you recommend, Bobby? And I said, we could do a stucco man that was running contrast to the brick, and create that, that cap, that termination cap for that brick. Then it would look authentic, it would look convincing, even though it is soap brick. The, the owner understood, was respectful, but felt that he didn't want, he wasn't going to do it for his reasons. We respect that, that's why we're here, to make the final determination.
Well, in reality, nobody makes a roll-off brick, okay? Every single roll-off is half and full, and that's what caps all the rest of the wall. So they can make an argument for any kind of brick that's out there, because it isn't my product. I would be willing to bet, I would be willing to bet, something could be found and cut and put up there to resemble a roll-off and to finish. I'm not saying it would be easy, but, but I, but I'd be willing to bet it could be found. Especially when the end product is painted white. So you don't really have to worry about what it is, it just has to conform to our size of the system.
Let me just add before, you know, the applicants, as far as we are. The thing that I had most heartbreak as a designer, or heartburn as a design professional, was the treatment of the arch on the porch share. Where it was just a running brick, and it never, if it would have been real brick, it never would have worked structurally. That brick would have fallen. So if it would have had seder course, or soldier course, or a stone that would have held that brick above the arch. So we made a suggestion to take a stucco and create that. They did a fabulous job with it. And now, my heartburn has gone away. I feel good about that particular item. That was very exciting. Not crazy about the way the brick is right now. I understand their concerns about extra cost. But that's where I look to the commission to make the final determination on that. Let me say.
And Bobby, I'm a little confused again, because when you were out, and you met with us, there were the three items, there were the medallions that we're putting up, that we put up. There was the corbels that were going underneath that front roof line that we made, that we had a carpenter made, and actually put those corbels there. And then there was the van on the carport. And you said, I represent the historic board. If you do these three items, I will give my recommendation to the historic board that I approve this house for. It just sounds like you, it's, you're changing that.
No, I'm not. We're actually.
You might be right.
I'm just representing the HPP. And so my, the CEO documents here have to be accurate of what they felt needed to be done for their conditions. I am saying that I did go out there and say, hey, you need to take care of this particular man. You really do. Here's my recommendation. It's not going to be expensive to do. They did that. Not crazy about the finish on the, on the brick, the way that works. If it would have been still painted white, it would have bled it, and you would have still seen the texture. And it wouldn't have been so obvious that that top course is wrong. All right, but they did paint. I am really, I'm willing to, to, I'm okay.
Are you making a recommendation?
Yeah, are you making a recommendation?
And I don't think it's for me to make the recommendation unless I'm asked.
You tell them not to then.
I'm saying that I would support the final decision on that, even architecturally. I'm not crazy about the solution.
Yeah, that's, if I'm hearing what you're saying, and is that all of the other things that were addressed were addressed very well, and you're satisfied with all of that, the one question that still remains is the either stucco or soldier course at the top of the weight scope.
Can I, can I interrupt? No, there's, no, we, when we met with Bobby on site, we looked at everything. We talked about maybe adding a different material to resemble a cap on the brick. The brick perimeter was around the entire carport, the entire house, and the entire garage. My understanding at that meeting with Bobby, when he started to look at it, and he talked about how adding another material on the house, and it's already got a lot of details, it seemed we were all in agreement that that part would be okay as it was. Intention upon us doing the stucco archways on the carport, the wood car, corbels, and the diamond shape. That is why we addressed those items. It was not financially feasible, and from our standpoint, overall, we were under the impression that that would appease the board.
Believe it or not, I actually was going right there. So you're right, that is what I heard, was that, that it's one last item. While it doesn't satisfy you completely as a designer, it is, it's low on your priority list.
Yes.
It wouldn't be up to you to recommend that that be accepted, but it would be up to the board to make that recommendation, that it be accepted, and to approve it, with that exception to your original report. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make a motion like that?
I respect the opportunity, and I respect the opportunity to do this. And I understand what it is to jump to the root, speak at a certificate of occupancy. And I would love you to stand until you leave tomorrow.
Speak, speak up.
There's no way to do anything with what you've done. Is, is the recommendation of the HPP, are they recommending that you do anything else?
Yeah.
No.
So what I'm hearing is, is that the H, the historic preservation board is satisfied. Mr. Morales is representative, that they are satisfied. He's saying that it's not, he's a wild hump like that, but he's okay with it.
I'm not, I'm already giving you the C.
So we'll take that as our approach.
Yes, I'd make a motion to, to give this gentleman his certificate of occupancy.
Maybe I'm too, now, out here, but the certificate of occupancy doesn't at all still have something in this, in the sidewalk. If you can prove this, and I don't know if that's going to be the certificate.
Ultimately, yeah, we do, we do want to get him CO. I think we have to formally have you guys vote on if you see a certificate of appropriateness for the architectural achievements of the house.
Right.
I think that's.
Probably the better thing to do is just vote to accept the architectural. Make a motion to approve architectural details. As recommended. Your issue is the certificate of appropriateness.
So we have a motion to accept the certificate of appropriateness, approval of the, to approve the certificate of appropriateness from the historic preservation board. Do we have a second? Motion for Commissioner Basso, a second for Commissioner Morales, to accept the approval, or to approve, anyway. All the favors say aye. Any opposed? Say no. That motion carries. The only question now is the sidewalk.
Yes, I would like to explain, first of all, as far as getting a CO, it has to go through quite a process, right? Especially where we're located. So to date, we have approved, we have received a final building inspection approval. So from a building code standpoint, that house meets all of Florida's requirements for building code. All of our impact fees are paid for the city and for the county. We have just received the COA. The building official has approved issuance of a temporary CO to allow the homeowners to close out their loan and the builder's risk insurance.
As for the hurricanes, you mentioned.
And, you know, I would like to state sidewalk requirements were not listed on any of our permit application documents. This family has a construction loan to close out. This is our priority. You know, during our meeting Monday, Lee and Scott determined it's up to the building official to decide if we're eligible for a TCO, which is a temporary CO, because the sidewalks have been such a pop discussion. This would satisfy the requirements of their home and the builder's risk policy. We received approval from Mark Griswold, the building official yesterday, conditional to a signed agreement that we will satisfy the sidewalk requirements as determined by you, the commission, tonight. Pending your vote, we'll be able to draft this agreement and properly allow this family to close their loan and move into their house. This family, you know, was really dedicated to being in Lake Helen, and that is my goal tonight. So I know that a couple, maybe a week and a half ago, Lee sent out a document to all of you that was drafted by me. It was an analysis of our comp plan, which a lot of what the land development codes are, are pulled from that. The, the comp plan is an overall view of the town. And there are many points in there where it says, we are a rural town, we are a west trading town. And there is a sidewalk analysis in there. It says the lane of service or pedestrian traffic in arterial and collector roads is LOSD. That is one sidewalk on one side, non-contiguous. If you look at any arterial or collector road in Lake Helen, they pretty much all have sidewalks on one side. That is where Lake Helen, Lakeview, High Street, you can look at that on Summit. I mean, that is the pattern of our town. Our concern is, our primary concern is the safety and the lack of ambiance that a segmented sidewalk is going to create in our gateway. Lee said at the last meeting that we're trying to close the gaps in the sidewalks in town. Creating this makes it actually another segment, another gap to close. We are not like the other blocks nearby. We don't have a lot of existing homes with their own sidewalks. We are one home standing alone, and then we've got Ace Gray Park, which is owned not even by the city. It's owned by the garden club. To do sidewalks down that entire block would mean either getting rid of a lot of mature trees, especially in the park area, or, you know, especially where we're at, we have to, we would have to put a sidewalk on Main Street in the county right of way. We went out there with them and looked at that. So our primary concern, and you as commission, I don't know if you do this, but you have a right, per our land development code, to deem a sidewalk unsafe or not tactical, and for that reason, you can vote to say it's not necessary. While I have the mic, I want to say a couple other things. It's come to my attention, and this is part of the packet that I submitted, that Lee submitted to all of you. There is a house that just closed, I think at the end of last year. And according to them, they didn't have to put sidewalks in because Lee said that the shoulder was too narrow. So we are going through a lot of work, and we are okay with that, to get ours considered for waiting. And it's interesting that another applicant didn't even have to go through that process and was able to get rid of it. And that was at 250 bar. I don't know if that's the truth or not. That's what I heard. I just want to point out, there's a lot of inconsistencies. My secondary, the point of opinion would be that this code needs to be revised. I think it really needs to be renewed, maybe full developments, put in the infrastructure for sidewalks. Maybe if you're building where there's already existing sidewalks, you have to tie into it. Maybe if you're building, there's already a sidewalk on the other side of the road, you don't have to put one in. I mean, I'm not here to redesign that, but, you know, those are my main points. Not enough of the home.
I'll let you guys respond, and then maybe I can answer. Because we, like you said, Lee and Scott came out and viewed the properties, and gave their thoughts and their recommendations, and we can talk about those. But maybe if you guys have any responses or discussion what Kayla said, and then I can offer a couple of comments after that.
I'd just like to reiterate something I said kind of in the beginning of this, is that, you know, our goal here is to, is to help you with this process, not to, not to create a roadblock here. So I think we'll find some sort of solution for you tonight. I'm not sure exactly what that'll look like. I can't, I can't mandate that, but I think we'll find something. So let's work our way through this and see what we can best find. I appreciate all of your, of your comments, if you have a question.
Commissioner Basso. There's, there's a lot of those ambigities in that sidewalk regulations, okay? And I personally think the meeting workshop, I'm happy to discuss it. But I think every single homeowner, no matter where they are, should either have sidewalks with it or put money into a fund that's for sidewalks. One of the two doesn't matter. My biggest concern comes in play if we have homes that are in, well, your neighborhood, that are on two and a half, five year blocks, and to ask somebody to use a pro forma, let's take the linear fee times X number of dollars. I don't think it's fair, because the same housing subdivision, that laws aren't being insignificant to us. So I think there should be, so number one, a flat rate if you will, if that makes any sense, or the less or two. And I think that there, most certainly, there are places, there are just as many arguments for why sidewalks should not be in as there are should be in. So this definitely needs, workshop, definitely needs to be taken care of. It's not going to happen tonight, because, because there's too many questions that need to be answered, and too much of this needs to be metered out. But I don't want this board to hold you up on where you need to get, okay? And so, in my mind, if I can get an agreement from you that you understand one of two things are going to happen, either you're going to wind up having to put a sidewalk in, or you're, or you're going to wind up putting money into a fund in your agreements with one of those two things, I wouldn't mind giving you a temporary CO, letting you move into your house, let you continue with your life. And while we meter out, you know, the functionality of the whole sidewalk.
Yeah, and I would say this, first of all, thank you, because it has been a process. My wife's a teacher at Ibehan near town. I have a daughter that went to Ibehan, I have a son that currently goes to Ibehan. So we're in this town, and we're building this house for the future. So whatever we talk about tonight, you have my word, that it will happen. That's personal.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Lake Helen's a great place. We want to be here. We're a part of the community. And what makes sense, we're for it. So if we get a temporary CO and that happened, and if we can figure this out, and a week, two weeks, whatever it takes, you have my word with that one.
Mr. City Administrator, is a, is a temporary, a valid, a valid move at this point for us to make? I, I know our only leverage as a commission, or as a city, is, once the CO is issued, we lose all leverage.
Temporary CO, you can answer.
Is a temporary CO a valid motion?
We discussed, we being, uh, an agreement that the building official had suggested first. And that was a temporary CO, a written agreement from the city, with the city, that they lose all at this certain point in the future.
That's not what it's about.
Let's, let's do one thing before we go any further. Let me interrupt you, I'm sorry, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. So let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your tolerance and patience. I'd like to get this going again. I'm going to turn it over, turn the floor over to our city attorney to kind of give us our overview of our options here as we proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Section 11, Point of Appeal Code states in paragraph 1, projects abutting of collector apparel so they shop by sidewalks adjacent to the collector art area. There's two streets here. This is on the corner of High and Main Street. High is not one of those collector art areas, but main gives to the collector art area. The other thing that would require the sidewalk being on High Street is the gateway standard that says, "All women shall have sidewalks." That's what they do. So in the gateway overlay, there's another requirement for sidewalks above this. The reason is before you, so section two says, "The city commissioning may make exceptions to the requirement when finding a sidewalk is not practical." So one option is for you to look at this, we don't define how impractical it is. One is for you to say it's not practical to put a sidewalk in either on High, or on Main, or both. That is within your discretion to do. My personal opinion is it would mean nothing, this whole thing, but when I went out there and looked at the site, High Street on their side of the street, when you look down High Street from Main, there are no sidewalks as far as the eye can see. Now, maybe the image will fit some, I don't know. But there are no sidewalks, there are some houses next to them that actually have bushes planted in the front yard, which is where a sidewalk is going. So if there was going to be a sidewalk extended down there, I don't even know where the right-of-way is, but you're going to be taking on people with bushes. So I'm just saying there's not a sidewalk that is very beneficial since the way going down High.
It's on the other side of the road though, there is.
The other, the other side, yes, there's sidewalks laying there. I'm saying on your side of the street, going down High. Now, on Main, you have a sidewalk going all the way down Main, and it gets to High, their street. So there is a sidewalk coming down Main. And then you go down a ways, there's no sidewalk on where their property is, I think it comes to a park where there's no sidewalk. And then there's from there down to whatever road this is, either your main road, uh, we're not a city, we're a paper. Where the, there are basically sporadic sidewalks. There's a couple there, and some houses with different, or something like that. So I could see a sidewalk being more practical in my eyes along Main. So, I could see a sidewalk being more practical in my eyes along Main, personal opinion, and not so practical down High. They're in, they're, you're going to have a sidewalk and no one else, there's not going to be, it's not like there's vacant land there that some days someone's going to build a sidewalk. The only way that sidewalk is going to, you're connected, if you're required to put one in, it's stated, go in and put a sidewalk quarter mile out our part of, you get to the next set of sidewalks. It's a long one. So, there is an option where you can say it's not practical to put in a sidewalk. The other provision says that there's a, and also we talked about running it along Main. They have a telephone pole stop sign right there at the corner of High and Main. And if they couldn't use the county right of way of Main to put the sidewalk in, they'd have to go pretty significantly onto their property and loop around to come back. That's my understanding that they could install a sidewalk on, within the county right of way along Main. We've checked into that, that could be done, and that would flow pretty nicely in my opinion, pretty much straight line. Uh, the other option that you have is under section 6. They, the developer has the option of paying an in-lube of the per sidewalk construction. If it's determined by the commission that the public purpose, that a public purpose will be served by applying said fee to an existing or planned sidewalk leakage, rather than construction a sidewalk to develop a sidewalk. So, that's your second option. There's an option on the fee there to be paid where you can be more, serve better public purpose to view that many, some more folks within the city who's requiring a sidewalk on this block. Third, and you always have this option, is that you can then go, you can just say, "Look, we need to do this, go." Can't do it tonight, but you can direct staff, whether it's a workshop, well, you have a workshop, I want to come back. There is language in our comp plan that was clearly referenced. The way I, the person says it's not a regulatory provision, it's more of a, I think it talks about deal congestion and stuff like that, but it says it's not regulatory. But a lot of your comp plan requirements set thresholds that can not be violated. But it doesn't mean our code can't be more restrictive. So, for instance, remember last night we were talking about the Orange Man project? I said our downtown commercial land use allowed eight units per acre. Our downtown commercial zoning only allowed four. So, the comp plan would allow more, but our zoning could actually only allow less. Same in this situation, our comp plan says, "Look, we want these certain types of sidewalks, level service D." I would not believe that means our, our code could require more restrictions than that. It's just we could not go below the level of service that we've set in our comp plan. So we have to at least make the minimum threshold to get, move back to the zone in of eight units per acre. We can't go above eight units an acre, or we can go less than eight units an acre, because the comp plan set a, set a threshold where we are on them. So, in this particular situation, there, in regards to the certificate of occupancy, temporary certificate of occupancy, that really lies with the chief builder official, that he's the one who makes the decision on our COs and temporary COs. I believe his email said that he would be okay with a temporary CO along with an acceptable agreement between the parties or something like that. And we talked about that when the property owner, the tailor, that, that the biggest question with a, when you give someone a temporary CO, what do you do if they don't perform? That's, that's always the question. They're in the facility, they're in the property, they're living there, likely that you're going to throw them out is very slim. So, it's always the performance aspect of what are you going to do if they don't perform? Not saying I don't think you will, the same, you gotta think about that question. What do you do if they don't perform? How does the city protect you? We can always sue them, reach a contract, try to collect the money that way or something like that. But that's always, always a question with a temporary CO is, you know, how long does it get for? And what do you do if they don't perform? So, if the temporary CO expires, what are we going to do? You show up water. How are we going to get them to perform? You can always go to court with an estimated cost, or we can wait to see if the commission changes our regulations. To say, "Look, you have a temporary CO, then we want to apply whatever our good regulations are for the commission to see if that, or if they agree that they will comply with whatever the regulations are." There's options there, but just the only word caution to give you is always to worry about how you would force an agreement if someone doesn't perform.
Scott, can I ask you two more questions? One is, do you think we should vote or have the commission vote on your three options for the sidewalks? First, okay, your two, and then?
Yeah, well, it was changed a bit.
And then, once that happens, if needed, then we talk about the temporary CO?
Correct, because if the commission says, "It's not practical sidewalks," then, then everything is good, they can move in. If, if you say you want a sidewalk on one or both of the streets, then we need to say, "Okay, they would like to move in now." Chief builder official, you have the temporary CO. If we put it three together, do you have any specific term from what we have put in this agreement where it's been best we can represent?
And I would say this too, Scott, I'm so confident in our ability and my integrity to honor what they decide. If you decide sidewalks that have a 1970 C10 special paper source, $40,000, you can hold the title. And I, I'm so confident.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Let's not get too crass.
There's discussions about what happens to vehicles on city car.
I'm so confident.
At least 2027.
I want to say something before you can turn it over and make any motion. Regarding the in-lube fund, oh, okay, okay, sorry. Debbie gave us the numbers for the in-lube fund and it's astronomical. And personally, I could pour a sidewalk for a lot less than what we would give to the in-lube fund. But our concern is that it's kind of an eyesore in our driveway, in our gateway, and it's not practical in our opinion. So those are the primary, our primary stance on the options that you have. I get the in-lube fund, I understand it, but it's financially, if any of you were in this position, I think you would understand if you had no neighbors directly next to you with any sidewalks, but you had a sidewalk right across the street, and you have the option to pay a kind of inflated cost for sidewalks. Or put them in yourself and they were, you were the only one on your, on your street that had them, you know, it's a really strange situation to me.
I would love to know what astronomical is.
I will tell you. Uh, we used a county contract for sidewalks that we did. And the, took the square footage of both Main and High, and it was $13,000 off. Would be the in-lube cost. Another thing I want to mention to you is, we have this issue of sidewalks come in every day, and we hope to get them across now. And when you say not practical, without some standard, they're always going to say, "Well, you know, they said whatever." I didn't say anything practical. We, we need to have something at the staff level that you can give us to define what's practical for when we should or when we shouldn't. And I'm not sure who mentioned it, but somebody said, I, I mentioned one or two people, that there are, in my opinion, two different areas of the city. The world of the downtown, old city and the rural city, two blocks apart. Where, the rural part certainly, and I would say that's more, not necessary, but sidewalks. Maybe brighten someone up there. But anyways, and the old town area is the opinion of ourselves that we do need sidewalks, which that's what you are saying. But we just need some guidance after this decision. Whereas what I'm trying to say is, this is going to go with this decision, unless we, unless we do something, it's going to linger for forever.
Yeah, I, I think, just last point, and then you guys can decide. I think the practical piece for us is, you have a sidewalk that's going to stop not quite halfway down the block. And Mr. Roy is out with a lot next to us that would be built on. And the Asian gray or the garden will never have a sidewalk there because of the mature trees, the mature shrubs that would have to come out to put a sidewalk in. So that's one thing, that sidewalk will never be finished, just as long as I'm, as long as I'm on service. And then the other fact is, you have an intersection at High and Main that has a crosswalk, sidewalk, sort of like a memorial. If you even have a sidewalk that ends, I certainly don't want my children crossing where that sidewalk ends across Main Street. It gives the other sidewalk that has a good, and there's no crosswalk or anything else, where there's a perfectly good one there. And those are the two points I have, and I'm pretty practical, what I would say, and I wouldn't think of any more.
I understand, and just as the city attorney said, you know, he went down and, and looked at it. You know, if you could put any of us, yourself and the attorney, the city attorney, we can all look at it and say, "I think this makes sense." And it does, you know, and we all know exactly what makes sense when we're looking at it. But we have an obligation to make it make sense in the code and to be easily understood and easily enforced across the board. As the city attorney said, we've got 12 applications in the process right now. This is not a one-off decision, this is a decision that impacts those twelve immediately and everybody from here forward. It's not, it's not just this one decision that we want to just think lightly and move on. Kick this ball, you know, kick the can down the road and not really solve the issue. That's what we're trying to do, is solve the issue in a way that's, that's reasonable and enforceable and understood for, you know, all time.
I think essentially more things, speaking what the city attorney did today and being on site, that maybe there's two votes. And that if we just look at Main rather than, you know, coming down High, that doesn't make any sense because you're three, four blocks down.
Well, there, there again, it's, it doesn't make sense when we look at it right now, but we don't have ordinance that really defines how it prioritizes that well. Because obviously there's differences of opinion. And certainly as soon as we provide an exception now and say, "We don't need it," without anything more concrete to go on, everybody will then want that exception. Because they don't see it that way. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that's what you're trying to create, I'm saying that's the reality of what we'll see. And when the city attorney gave us a brief explanation of what our options were here, you could see how, you know, even though it's simple, it did actually, it's more complex than you think. This is, his brief explanation took about three and a half minutes. And I'm not saying that was stupid or, I'm saying that's how, that's, that's the nature of this, it's not as, as simple as it seems.
You just said that with common sense, you all can see that that may not be a practical sidewalk. Our code specifically says the commission may use common sense and consideration of if it's practical or not. I think it's, it's literally right there, you guys can decide as a board if, if it makes sense or not.
And, and without the, I don't, I want this to sound rude, but that's like the fifth time you've told us that, and I got told that about 20 times when I was standing back in the corner. We do understand that, we, we know the authority we have, and we can, we can say, "Y'all are just great, we want y'all to have a nice day going." And we can do that. But what I'm saying is, is that a commission, we're, we're setting ourselves up for everybody wanting that same, let's all be happy mentality. And we've got, we, we have a commitment, we have a desire that's shown in the comp plan. So what we want the city to basically look like, that's a little vague. We're admitting that right now, it's vague, you're seeing it one way, and, and we're not, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not saying anything any of y'all said is wrong.
Well, we've been trying to prove that there's a safety concern and there's a, a lack of use, so are those not substantial enough to define?
They're very, I, I, and I really do agree. I really do, I agree. You don't want to have, send people halfway down that block and then have nowhere to go, and the kids just, and that makes perfect sense. Absolutely reasonable, 100%, I get that.
So another applicant who wants to narrate is about to come in and prove a safety concern or something of the like, right? It's not just like what you said, it's then, and so we want to have the same thing, they have to convince you, right?
And what we're saying, I, yeah, I've got two hands, one in line here. We, we're trying to come up with something that will work into the future, and it's not going to happen by looking at the specifics of this one project. A workshop can make that work and make progress towards a solution that will happen. I'm going to let the city commissioner speak.
I work for a city that's about 100 times larger than this one. And they had many main roads that had hazard sidewalks installed because they went from being a normal, I guess, a special taxi district into becoming a city. And the city required sidewalks, and so there was houses being built that had sidewalks in front of their houses. Empty dirt, 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 sidewalk, dirt, dirt, dirt. And it happened for a while until finally everything was getting built up and all the sidewalks began to have to, and they survived. Couple people got hit, yes, I responded to pick them up off the ground, sent them to the hospital. But Main Street is a high-traffic street, and you know that. And that, more importantly, needs to have sidewalks on it. And the other thing to consider is, sooner or later, either the city or the county is going to come to the homeowners along that side of the street and ask for a right-of-way to finish the trail that stops at Summit. That's a large sidewalk coming into Lakeview, this part of the cross-county trail that stops at Summit. And then it picks up that Lake Park. So, in the future, they're going to come and want the right-of-way, and they're, you know, going to offer to pay for it or whatever negotiations go through to put in a 10-foot wide or 12-foot wide as well, they can put a sidewalk down that side of Main Street.
What makes you think they're going to want them on both sides of the road though? I mean, even our code doesn't define that the sidewalks have to be on both sides of the road.
Because the high-traffic road that Main Street is, and it's going to get even more traffic as more and more development goes on. Same safety standard, eventually there's going to be sidewalks on both sides of your main streets. Main Street, Lakeview, everywhere is going to have sidewalks on both sides. And I see them putting a sidewalk in basic sooner or later, they're going to have to.
Before anybody else speaks, before anybody else speaks, and certainly before anybody speaks from the gallery, I'd like to restore the, the meeting to its proper civil way to do this. I will be glad to recognize you, I recognize you, I'd like to speak. But interrupting the questions on record basis of the commission is getting a little out of hand. I, I know your passion on this, I don't know, I'm not overly frustrated with you, I'm just asking that we kind of restore back to a more civil order of this. You'll have every opportunity to speak, I'm not going to cut you off and say, "We don't want to hear what you say anymore." That's not where I'm going. I just want to restore it back to a more orderly fashion. And I don't ever want anything from the gallery, I call people down. And if you want to speak, blue cards, I'll give everybody a chance to speak, I'll listen.
I'm going back to the first thing I said earlier. There's a ton of ambiguities in it, it needs a workshop, it needs to be done. I'm ready tonight to give you guys a temporary CO, but I think, and I think as far as I'm concerned, I require you to either put the sidewalk in along the major architectural area, which like Roger said, is going to happen anyway, and/or put money into the funding. Either one of those gets your doors open and you can go down the road. Because the workshop is not going to happen yesterday, and there's more questions that need to be answered tonight than there was before I came in here. And I thought I figured everything out, but I haven't, and, and it needs Congress action. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to put a motion on the table to get you a temporary CO. And to put sidewalk in along the, along Main, and/or provide a compensation to define me, one of the two. And to me, that is your question.
I would say thank you.
I feel the conversation.
Do we have a second?
Do a card.
I can, I can.
I, I understand, we're, we're, have a motion on the floor, I'll, I'll, don't worry, I will recognize you. you, I promise. A motion on the floor, do we have a second motion? Have a motion and a second to approve the temporary CO with the understanding that a sidewalk would be installed on Main or made into the sidewalk fund for that portion of that sidewalk. Now we go into discussion on that motion, and I do have a blue card for Ms. Troy.
Miss one question, what would be the timeframe for installing sidewalks?
I know it's not our motion. I'm going to, I'm going to recognize Ms. Troy and then we will get to that, that's her question. Ms. Troy.
Hi, Jim, Troy, holding one of those with me. A couple questions, in the ordinances, if you have a home going in and there is, I believe you just read it, and it said that if a homeowner does not want to add a sidewalk where there are sidewalks that it would link to, that they could pay a butt fee instead of putting a sidewalk in.
Does it say that?
You just, you just read it out loud, it said to link, what was that?
Obviously. It says, the developer may have an alternative to obtain an Inluwa fee for sidewalk construction that is determined by the city commission that a public purpose will be served by applying said fee to an existing or planned sidewalk linkage rather than constructing the sidewalk on the developer's side. It does not say if they don't have sidewalks linking to them, then they can pay a fee. That, I can say that.
And thirdly, we're starting to say, let's throw a sidewalk on Main Street, which is a sidewalk to nowhere. There's one house, there's a vacant lot, which is my backyard to a house I own, and there's A's Great Park. Why would we have a motion to have them put a sidewalk, a little piece of a sidewalk on Main Street? They are people who are a little bit not the usual home, where in some of the developments there are sidewalks and the new homes going in in the middle, yeah, they might want to have a sidewalk linking up. This is an unusual location, and to make these people have to promise to put a sidewalk in on Main Street when it was never on the permit, never discussed with them in advance, and now almost like holding hostage, but I'm going to get a CO now, this is like, they've got to start thinking about putting a sidewalk in, but it doesn't even make sense. It makes no sense in that location. And you guys all want to say, yeah, we agree, it makes no sense, and be done with this.
It may not make sense today, when the rest of the sidewalk goes in all the way down through A's Great Park, et cetera, to link it to the rest of the sidewalks in town, then it'll make sense.
Well, we don't really know that that's going to happen, that's kind of a prediction, you have enough fiscal laws here, when is that supposed to get?
That's part of our, that's part of our responsibilities to be commissioners and to see our city completely.
But we finished, we have to...
I understand what you're saying, you and I just disagree, okay? We just disagree.
I just feel like it's not fair to those particular...
I feel bad as well, I find it hard to believe that all the conversations with building the house, that sidewalks never came up.
I find that like a real mishap too, I agree.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a different conversation. Please talk about the need for directions so we know exactly whether to take somebody and beauty out. Back to what I said, Chris, workshop, decide what we really need to do throughout the whole city, not just for one particular situation. The city commission needs to be here for the one-off.
But the city...
This is, this particular situation, sidewalks in a city like County is bigger than just this house.
And there will be so many homes that are individual like this, that are in areas where you have to need a sidewalk.
And, and...
And how, how is it that the administrator can say, how do we don't need a sidewalk?
That's why we want to go to workshop, figure it all out.
How does that happen?
We say, can you make a workshop on this case? I mean, you don't have workshops for?
No, I don't know how a house was just built over there on Bar, and they were told from the administrator apparently that they don't need to put in a sidewalk. How is that, is that even okay?
I know that's what you're saying, I don't know if that's a reality, because I agree that's not...
Lee, did that happen?
It happened, it was an interpretation of the portion of the code that says on arterial sidewalks, you need to put in a sidewalk. That particular interpretation, and it was read to me, if you're not a contractor or a arterial, you don't need to put a sidewalk in. Personally, it gets an inverted application, but we have so many of those decisions we've committed over the years. The one right behind the house, I'm talking about, High Street doesn't have one, and yet it's in the gateway. That, that provision has been in the code for years and years. Why it happened in the camp, I don't know. There, there is the need to bring my information to this.
I agree. It requires a workshop, we have all the details.
Yep.
So does the house, are the apartments paid into the sidewalk?
No. It's a bit far from the gateway?
No.
Well, it doesn't require a sidewalk. Our county attorney said you have to have a sidewalk within arterial or collective requirements, and then link it to the gateway. This kind of is more of a slot, so there is not a requirement for a sidewalk on those streets.
I have three more blue cards, which I would like to call. First is Cory Kazanian.
Again, Cory Kazanian, you want to continue, or Gavin? My, my thinking is more about, I understand the need for a workshop, and I think Kayla very clearly expressed the need for a workshop and regulation and code and all that stuff. I, we're a building contractor company, we're permanent, so when we do our site plan, which is required to be surveyed, which is accurate, every single unit on that site, when we build, we have to submit that to zoning and permit along the permit, which they did, and it was approved without a sidewalk, just as all these other exceptions over the years, all these houses that were supposed to have sidewalks according to zoning, but it was approved through permit process, through zoning, and approved as is. And now I feel as though we're moving the goal line after we've already approved the site plan. And for me, that's a very specific difference, isn't that, yes, I totally understand that you guys, when you say yes to something, it then sets in a course of events, but the problem is, you guys already said yes to, not you as an individual, you as a, well, you guys did vote on the original plans, I assume, and which included on the front page the site plan that showed where the driveways were going with no sidewalks.
That's, that's not a sidewalk.
It is exactly, they had, because it's the gateway, they had to go to the storeport, and then, right before you got this, which a lot of places don't necessarily do because we have, they have to see. So for me, it's like, if they were still in permit and still in zoning review, that is a place, and all the projects that are in zoning and permit review right now is a place to workshop those projects. But anything that's been approved permitting-wise and in lieu of zoning-wise, the city that we elected to hire the people that said, hey, this is the building commission, all this thing, saying, okay, yes, this, and here's all those things, now it's a mistake if you guys made those mistakes on the other 13 other, 17 other homes that don't have sidewalks, but you approved the site plan as is, just as you guys deal with these new couple here without the sidewalks and permit. To say, okay, you've done everything, even the storeport, you know, trying to push that goal line after you've already said it, if I ran a marathon, which it's been a marathon in the city, you do any kind of construction, and then all of a sudden I realize you added three more houses, like that, that just sucks. And I don't think it's making it fair either. And then, because it's already been approved with the site plan, for me, that's as a contractor, there's things I don't like, but I've had to put in swells and flares and six-inch things on the site plan, I tried to get away with the minimums, save money for climate or whatever, but there's zoning, like, no, this is what it's got to be. And I know the city plan, they made me put sidewalks right in zoning, and it said, okay, you got everything good, okay, cool, now we need a sidewalk. Because as a contractor, like, if I created a project, and it's a $10,000 driveway, and then I get done, and they say, oh, you need about $4,000 for the sidewalks, but they don't have any money, where, like, and now I can't drive to my sidewalk or move my house because you guys arbitrarily at the end moved the goal line. And whether that's really your responsibility to fill up at the beginning, I think so. But that's, as a contractor, I would, that's why I'm here today, because I just think you guys approved the site plan that didn't have the things. There's many, many other houses that are approved under the same rules and guidelines, and they all had some sort of either exception or just missed, and it missed in zoning, not in final inspection, because they, they build, it is a building inspector job to take the signed and sealed blueprints, which include the site plan, and inspect that, not what even building code says. So if this plan, contract's building code has been approved by the building department, they have to inspect the building, they have to go off the blueprints, not even the building code, but, now, if everything, they cannot pass it and go, go through all jumping. But that's why there's a signed and sealed set, it includes the site plan, and the site plan is the first page, because it's the most important one. As you city know, because we've had some accidents over the years where the site plans weren't looped that properly. And so for me, it's already approved, go ahead and vote it, as is, no thing, because again, you said, oh, they're going to put sidewalks in anyways, eventually. All the way down Main, so I don't think a lot will happen, because again, you're not going to have another man who's across. But again, then if that's the case, let, that, why make another regulation for something in the future that is going to be ready again? Why put the permit now to keep them from moving their home and having to wait over their heads until Christmas and wondering, oh, am I going to spend $14,000 or do we get Christmas presents this year, guys? Like, so that's, like, I'm sure I would agree with you.
Thank you. I've got...
Thank you, Cory.
And everybody always wonders why I argue about having everything in the plans upfront.
Yeah, it's okay. And those are good points, I appreciate that. Mr. Price, does this have a yellow card?
No, sir, I'm going to reserve my comments for the folks speaking, so...
Okay, that's what I could, okay, so you did understand what yellow, then, thank you. Okay, next I have Danielle Hager.
Danielle Hager, 220, 291 South, you put out there. I just wanted to reiterate, I agree with what Cory said, it seems like it's kind of too late to make a decision to make them put in a sidewalk tonight or make them contribute $13,000 or $15,000, whatever it is, to put in a sidewalk on one or maybe both of the roads. Really, the decision is, you know, do you think it's appropriate now? It sounds like everyone seems like probably not appropriate, whether we think the sidewalk might come from the county down the road, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but right now, it's not really appropriate in that area. And to make them have this temporary CO, one question I was wondering is, how, how long is that temporary good for? And then brought up, what if it expires and we still haven't figured out the workshop? It sounds like tonight, what I would think would make sense is to say, look, their plans have already been reviewed and approved by the side plan, like Cory said. Sidewalks weren't part of that, and for whatever reason, they weren't brought up, and sorry, you know, that's something that needs to be addressed, and a workshop would be great for that. But that's for homes that are in permitting now and will be coming in permitting. But this house is at the end, and it's really too late now to make them pay $15,000 or make them put a sidewalk. And that's just my opinion, if I was a homeowner, I would be not so gracious, I'd be very upset that you were making me do this at the end when it was never part of the plan that was approved. So I just think that, yes, I agree with Mr. Vasco, we do need workshop, and absolutely need to address all the other homes that are coming and will come.